Good evening. Welcome to the August 7th, 2014 City Council meeting. And we're going to start by with our prayer and our pledge, and Ms. Madeline Skels-Harris is going to be handling that tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you just to say thank you, Lord. Thank you for blessing us to see this day. Thank you for the many blessings that we take for granted, like our food, shelter, clothing, families, friendship. We thank you for all of these, Lord. Bless the sick, the shut-in, and the bereaved everywhere. And as our schools begin to open, keep our children safe. And thank you for the great employees that you have restored on the city of Murfreesboro, continue to keep them safe. And, Lord, bless the veterans that are fighting on foreign soil, that we can be at peace. And as we begin to partake of this meeting, we ask that you move in the midst and that we do and make the right decisions that will be very beneficial to all of our citizens. This is my prayer that I ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I want to start out and first say I apologize. I was not at National Night Out. I was the emcee for the Tennessee Hospitality Association's state banquet that we were lucky to have here in Murfreesboro. And as a matter of fact, Peter Demas won the Tennessee Restauranteer of the Year Award, which was good. But I heard we had a great event. I want to thank you to the Police Department. Also, thank you to the Community Development Group Department and also Murfreesboro Housing Authority. But I also want to apologize that I heard that for those of you who follow on YouTube that there was a very disturbing video, and I think that probably is going to come up on our screen.
Now, that is just wrong.
All right.
I won't sleep tonight.
Now, we know if we have a dance committee, who will be on that committee.
Who won't?
Yep, or who won't. That's a good point. All right, we'll move into our consent agenda. Item 1A has been withdrawn. Do we have any additions or deletions, or anyone that would like to take anything off the consent agenda?
Just because I'm on or mentioned in item 1B, I think it's probably appropriate that I remove myself from voting on the consent agenda tonight.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. All right, we have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Pass.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. I do want to turn the floor over to Ms. Logan before we move any further in the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here tonight. The reason that I'm here tonight is because we're fortunate enough to have another round of Stars winners. And as Rob always says, I get to do all the happy talk, but I love it. And I love the fact that we get to have an opportunity here to recognize for our entire community the wonderful employees of the city of Murfreesboro. Tonight, our Stars winners, Stars Award winners, come from the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department. And the reason that they were nominated was for their heroic actions back on February 24th of this year for helping deliver a baby girl. In fact, although our firefighters are now basic life support before were first responders at that time, they actually delivered the baby girl and had removed her umbilical cord for while they were waiting for EMS. And then when EMS arrived, they stayed and assisted, and they also made sure that the mother was well taken care of. And why the Stars Awards Committee thought that they deserved this award was not only because the actions, because this is not something that they do every day, believe it or not, they don't deliver babies every day. But they thought that what was really the nicest touch about it was the care that they provided to the mother during throughout. And you can imagine, if you're in that situation, the fear that you would go through, the fact that they stayed there, the fact that they assisted her, and just the fact that they wanted to make sure she was comfortable. And that's what I think that our employees strive to do every day, is make sure that people are made to feel special and that they're cared for. And that's why the Stars Award Committee felt that they were so deserving of this award. So Mayor McFarland is going to come and introduce their award, but before I introduce your Stars Award winners, I'll go ahead and name them, and then they'll come up and receive their awards each one individually. But I don't know if Chief Gaines from the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department would like to come and say a couple of words about what their actions are. But I would like to just let you know that our Stars Awards winners for the month of June, that we couldn't get them here in July, but that for the month of June are Mr. Ryan Battle, Mr. Justin Lewis, Mr. Adam P. Brown, and Mr. Valar Anderson. And they are from Station 3, or they were at Station 3 the day that the incident happened. So we're very proud of them. Chief Gaines, would you like to come say a few words?
Mayor and Council, I'm proud that members of our department were selected to receive the Stars Award. And this exemplifies our commitment to the directive given by Council to serve the citizens of Murfreesboro. So actually, I'm kind of ecstatic because it's been a while since we received the award. But the men and women in our department are hard workers, and it's nice to get recognized.
Mayor McFarland, would you like to come say a few words?
Ryan, Justin, Adam, Valar, I think I can speak on behalf of the entire City Council, speak on behalf of staff, that we are extremely proud of you. And I think you guys would be the first to say that you were on duty and you were the ones to call to do your job, but any member of our Fire and Rescue Department would have done the same thing. And that's a testament to the loyalty, to the dedication, and to the service that you provide our residents. And for that, we're thankful. Would also say we're thankful to your families. And I know that you have some of your families who are here tonight because they loan you to us for every shift. And I know that that's tough on families, that you're putting yourself in harm's way on a daily basis, and we thank you for allowing us to share your family with us. So it's my pleasure to present our Star Awards for June to Justin Lewis.
Thank you. Justin, do you have some of your family that would like to come up?
No.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you. Congratulations, Justin. Ryan Battle. Do you have some of your family that are here? Do you want to get some of your family here? There's some of your... Would you like to come up and have your picture made? Okay, all right. All right. Give the...
Yeah, I understand.
Mr. Valar Anderson. And last but not least, Adam P. Brown. Sure. Deputy Chief Thames, you want to come up? Chief Gaines? Congratulations.
That's awesome. Okay, so moving on. community would like to have them all recognized. It's a wonderful experience to be able to recognize our employees for all the hard work that they do for us. And with having said that, we have a couple more awards tonight that we'd like to recognize. I get the distinct pleasure of working closely with the Water and Sewer Department, and I can't tell you just how much I enjoy working with this department and what I just see happening in that department under Darren Gore's leadership. And it's just amazing to go there and see the teamwork and the camaraderie that they are building to try to provide for us the best utility district and the utility service in the state of Tennessee. And maybe I'm a little biased, but I seem to think that they are providing the best that you can find. And so do some other people, because we're here tonight to recognize them for some awards that they recently won from the Kentucky-Tennessee Water Environment Association on how great a job that they're doing. And the first award was the Award of Excellence for the Distribution System Operations Large Systems category. And that was presented to the city of Murfreesboro under the guidance of Mr. Terry Taylor. And let me just remind you that when you say large distribution center, that means better than any of the other great big cities here in the state of Tennessee. And so with that, if Mr. Darren Gore would please come to the microphone, and Mr. Terry Taylor, I think Ms. Mayor McFarland wants to present the award directly to Mr. Taylor. But before that, I'm sure Mr. Gore would like to say a few words about this award.
I'm not going to say so much about the awards. It's great to be recognized by peers, but I think we're in a great season in modern sewer. You go through seasons in life, and I think you go through seasons as a professional. And I think we're in a season of investment. I see these gentlemen investing in their people, and I would say the people they work with. I don't think anybody at Water and Sewer works for anybody. We all have each other's back, and we've developed authentic relationships. And I think out of that sprouts trust. And when you know that somebody's got your back, it allows you to put it, get into another gear. Nobody's making any more money. Nobody's getting... We're getting a little acclaim tonight, which is great and special. But at the end of the day, I think when you hit that other gear, it's because you really care for your coworker, you care for the people you're working with. And that's what we're trying to nurture at Water and Sewer, is those authentic relationships and that trust. So I love these guys, and I just want to thank them for what they do every day.
I think you're exactly right. We are in a season of investment. The council members will tell you that the money that is spent is just for tools, and we can give you the best tools, but if we don't have good people to handle those things, they're just tools. So thank you for what you do. So it's my pleasure to give you, in the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, and that's all the men and women who work in the department, the award for Distribution System Operations Large Systems Category for the Kentucky and Tennessee section.
In addition, also at the conference, Mr. John Strickland, who is the head of our wastewater treatment facility or wastewater treatment plant, was also recognized for his work and their outstanding work of excellence at the Sinking Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, and they were provided the Operational Excellence Award. And we'll have, if Darren wants to say anything about John, we will just second. But I just want to say that if you have not had a chance to go out and visit, our wastewater treatment plant is fascinating. You learn so much. And I know that people are like, "Oh, I'm not so sure about that." But John and his staff make you feel welcome, and you learn so much, and you see all of the processes and everything that it takes to really provide for us safe sewer systems here at the city of Murfreesboro. And we are very fortunate because they work with no errors. I mean, they have to be 100% all the time, and they are. And we are very fortunate that we have system like that here. But I would just tell you that if you haven't had an opportunity, or those at home, the public haven't had an opportunity, it's a fascinating learning experience. And I know this, you know, this may not be always the most exciting thing to talk about, but the processes and the work that they're doing out there, to be able to handle the growth and the capacity in Murfreesboro is really unbelievable. I mean, they're doing some really fascinating things, and I'm learning about it every day. So with that, I'll let Darren say a couple of words, and then we'd like to have Mayor McFarland issue the award to Mr. John Strickland for his outstanding excellence.
I won't go much more than what I just said, but I do want to thank the council. There's a trust amongst your peers and coworkers, and there's a trust that you all have given us by providing us the proper resources and tools, and we greatly, greatly appreciate that. It's a great, it's great to know that you're supported by your leadership. And I'll say with John, I call him Wonder Boy because he's getting some national recognition about what he's doing out at the plant. He is, I'd say courageous, what would we call it? Just acts of courage out at the wastewater plant on some of the things he's doing, and he's achieving some results that are getting the eyes of a lot of folks. I've told him if somebody comes out here and tries to pick him up and take him somewhere, to let me know first, so we can do something about that. But anyway, thank you all.
John, without your team, without the Water and Sewer Department's team, not just what you provide to our families, but economic development in Murfreesboro would not be possible without our water and sewer system. And you look at 16 years without a tax increase, you look at commercial development, you look at sales tax base that has gone up, and that's in large attributes to what you are doing and what your team's doing. So it's my pleasure, on behalf of the Kentucky-Tennessee Water Environment Association, to present you the Operational Excellence Award to the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, and that's for the outstanding operation at Sinking Creek during the period of January 1st, 2013 to December 31st, 2013. And this is for two consecutive years in a row for doing this. Congratulations, John. Anyone who watches these council meetings long enough, I think will learn one recurring theme, and that's we have some talented people who work for the city of Murfreesboro, and that's in every single department. All right, we'll move to minutes for the July 24th, 2014 meeting. If you have any additions or deletions.
No, I'll move. Proving?
Second. Mr. LaLance, Mr. Smotherman, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Yes.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to third readings. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14OZ36 to rezone an area along Agri Park Drive to residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. LaLance, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Pass.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14OA37 to annex an area along Veterans Parkway and to adopt for same a plan of services, Ms. Kathy Wright, executor of Best Hartman Estate, applicant 2014-504.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. LaLance, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14OZ38 to zone an area along Veterans Parkway as planned commercial development district simultaneous with annexation.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. LaLance, Mr. Young, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Pass.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14OA39 to annex an area located along Veterans Parkway and to adopt for same a plan of services.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. LaLance. We've got a recurring theme here. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14OZ40 to zone an area along Veterans Parkway as highway commercial CH district simultaneous with annexation.
Second.
All right, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14OZ41 to amend an area in the planned unit development district located north of Franklin Road, Old Fort Parkway, and the Hampton Park at Hillwood PUD.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. Smotherman, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to first readings. And consider for passage on first reading ordinance 14O42 authorizing the charging and collection of electronic traffic citation fees pursuant to Chapter 750 of the Public Acts of 2014.
Good day, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. For your consideration this evening is a proposed ordinance authorizing the charging and collection of electronic traffic citation fees in an amount of $5 per citation. If approved, the ordinance will allow the court to charge and collect an electronic traffic citation fee of $5 for each traffic citation resulting in a plea of guilty, no locandere, or a judgment of guilty. $1 of the fee will go to city court to be used for computer hardware purchases and necessary computer-related expenses. The remaining $4 will go to the Police Department to be used for electronic citation system-related expenditures, including technology, equipment, repairs, replacement, and training. The funds will be transmitted on a monthly basis to a special fund for the Police Department. In accordance with Chapter 750 of the Public Acts of 2014, the imposed fee will terminate within five years from the date on which the ordinance is adopted. Currently, the Murfreesboro Police Department utilizes traffic printers in a majority of their vehicles, and the plans are to install printers and remain patrol vehicles. This additional funding will help support ongoing maintenance costs as well as technology upgrades in the future. Is a recommendation of the Chief of Police and the City Judge that the City Council approve ordinance 14O42 authorizing the charging and collection of electronic traffic fees pursuant to Chapter 750 of the Public Acts of 2014 in an amount of $5 per citation. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm sorry, I meant Assistant Chief. I get the Fire Department, you guys, I apologize.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I've just got one clerical thing that I think needs to be cleaned up on page 117 of our information that we have on our pads. Under ordinance 14-0-42, under the bold print there where it says Section 1, it has electronic traffic citation fees 5.00. I think it's supposed to be $5.
It's because it's in a column, and the first one has the dollar symbol. This is at the bottom of a column, so where it's going to be added, the dollar symbol will be applicable to it. The others in the column don't have individual dollar symbols. The dollar symbol is at the first entry in the column.
Why would it be any different in Section 3 when it says $4?
Because in Section 1, it's talking about, it's inserting it, it's a quotation of what's going to be inserted into the existing code. And the existing code, the first item in a series, has the dollar symbol. In Section 3, it's not inserted in anything, it's just describing what you all are doing, so the dollar symbol doesn't otherwise exist. That was why it was specified in Section 3.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Hearing none, I'll move for passage.
Second.
All right. Mr. Lance, Mr. Washington. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Skels-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to new business and consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board with regards to authorizing resolutions for state revolving loan, SRF application recap of fiscal year 2015 through 2019 Capital Improvements Plan, CIP, debt service compared to total debt service rate design and affordability. And I'm not even going to ask, but I assume we have a PowerPoint to look at.
Yes, yes, sir, Mayor. Back to the normal Darren here. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. We were talking of investment in relationships earlier, now we're talking about some investments in some concrete and steel. While John has maximized the efficiency of the plant, and we are operating it as lean as we can operate it currently, we do need to expand the plant. And I think this is some material that I've gone over with you before, but as part of the state revolving fund program, there are some authorizing resolutions that need to be passed before we can move forward with the closing of those loans. So there's nothing new here, but I am coming back to repeat and remind you of some material that we've addressed in the past. We did have a public meeting as part of this, these new loans that we advertised and put on the website and put on Facebook to bring the public in. And so I went through this presentation with the public, and we also presented this at the Water and Sewer Board meeting. So this is round three, so we hope that the word is getting out. First off, this is the project, you can see the neon green. These are the areas of infrastructure at our current plant. This is the Sinking Creek Wastewater Plant. In essence, we're adding 50% more treatment capacity at the plant through this expansion. This is what we call the plant upgrade Phase 4D. To remind you of the three major projects that are currently ongoing, that we've also acquired state revolving funds to pay for, we have the Southwest Regional Pump Station, it's out at Old Fort Parkway across from the golf course. You've probably seen the cranes and the construction out there. This is an older picture, but this is the hole that the pump station is going to sit within. That pump station is going to receive all the sewage from the southwest side of town and the south proportion of town, and it's going to pump it through a forest main up to the Sinking Creek Wastewater Plant where we currently have the Headworks, which is a screening facility that takes out the major debris and grit from the sewage before it gets into the biological treatment. That project is Project 4C at the plant. So that's where we're going and where we are currently. I have shown in gray, and I think you've got these slides on your, should be on your agenda, but I've kind of graded out the existing projects and the associated loans that we've already closed on. The Emboldened Project there, you see Phase 4D, it's comprised of two loans, a $32.5 million loan and a $4 million loan for a total of $36.5 million. You have to look at these loan totals as ceilings in effect, and we do have some principal forgiveness on the previous loans. So we do have a max ceiling, debt ceiling of $71.1 million on all five of those loans. The first three loans were at 1.1% fixed over a 20-year term. The current loan that we're planning on closing on is estimated to be at 1.3% 20-year fixed. This net... This, you have to look at these loans too as a line of credit. If we don't assume that $71.1 million in maximum debt, we draw down these loans and we pay on the interest as we are going through the process, and then when we finalize the project, if it's less than that ceiling, that is the only debt that we incur. So this is the, if you recall, that $71.1 million is the debt ceiling. What we currently see as far as a grand total right now is $58.33 million. Those first three projects that I went over, those came in lower than the estimate. This $36.5 million is just an estimate right now. We hope that it comes in under like the other projects did, but we are, so we're optimistic, but we're planning on the full $36.5 million. This is the cash flow that's associated with the forest main pump station and headworks that are currently ongoing. When you add the cash flow of the $36.5 million, you can see that pink, it extends that cash flow out until around October of 2017. The debt service, the annual debt service based on those percent loans and the fixed, the 20-year fixed, has a maximum of about $3.3 million annually would be our annual debt service. So we have plugged that into our, well, let me go through them. This is our existing debt service. You can see that in year 2022, we have about a $4 million drop in our existing debt service, and you can see by 2028, our existing debt service would be, would go to zero. When you add the $36.5 million, or I'm sorry, the four projects, which is the $58.3 million, you can see that debt service extended out to year 2036, I'm sorry. We have done cost of service studies that have incorporated this anticipated debt service. We had one in '07, 2011, and 2013. As part of the 2013 study, we actually had a 2018 pro forma which incorporated that new $3.3 million in debt service, which comprises about half of the revenue requirements that are needed by 2018. The other half is associated with increases in estimated annual operating and maintenance expenses. We came to you earlier in May and also had a rate design to accompany this to help support that pro forma and this incurred debt service. Currently, we have, we increased the minimum bill for sewer users by 50 cents a month. We hope that that 50 cents a month will, for the next three years beyond this year, will be able to support the revenue requirements. I will say there's some other larger meters that we are doing, some, taking away some of the base, some of the allowances under the minimum bill, that also generates some of the revenue, but this is basically for your residential customer, which comprises about 96% of our customer base. Again, just to remind you, those purple dots show a monthly fee that is 4% of a very low-income earner per the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We currently have about a $56.93, say $57 a month, average water and sewer bill. That is right at the, underneath the two-person, very-low-income, 4% of the very-low-income earner. So you can see that we hope to keep that, the goal is to really keep that line below those purple dots. So as long as we can keep our monthly fees below that affordability index, which is the 4% of very-low-income earners, then we may really consider the industry metric of staying below 4% of a very-low-income earner. So our future looks good, and I think we have a good vision or a good forecast of where we're headed. Again, I think a lot of this may be repeat material for you. But as part of the, I'm sorry, I've got recommended board actions there, should be a recommended council action. We want to recommend approval of authorizing Resolution 14R-21 for the state revolving fund loan SRF 2014-339 in the amount of $32.5 million. And I look to the city attorney, I think it would probably be under two, two different council actions, but the second action would be recommending approval of authorizing Resolution 14R-22 for state revolving fund loan CG-2-2014-338 in the amount of $4 million. Before you move forward, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I've got a question, maybe you could do that, or Jim, perhaps. So the interest rate on these loans, the 1.3% rate?
Mm-hmm.
Did you say that's fixed?
That's fixed, 20 years.
That's so low.
Uncle Sam?
It's a little under a typical municipal rate, probably like half.
It is. It's a federal loan that's subsidized through the state revolving fund, it works, it's operated through the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, so it is a very low fixed interest rate that we, we have to jump through some hoops to get it, but it's worth the jump.
Outstanding.
Can I get some of that money at that rate?
Careful. Any other questions? If not, I'll move for passage on the...
Let's go, we'll go through, visual one. Consider for adoption Resolution 14R-21 authorizing and providing for the financing of the construction of a wastewater facilities project, Department of Environment and Conservation number SRF 2014-339 in the amount of $32.5 million.
I'll move for passage.
Second.
Mr. LaLance and Ms. Gels Harris. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Yes.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for adoption Resolution 14R-22 authorizing and providing for the financing of the construction of a wastewater facilities project, CG-2-2014-338 in the amount of $4 million.
Move for approval.
Okay, Ms. Gels Harris, Mr. Washington, Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Ms. Wright, do we have any beer permits?
We do.
Thank you, Darren.
Tonight, we have a special event permit application from St. Thomas Rutherford Foundation for three special events to be held August 18th, September 20th, and September 20th actually has two locations. There's going to be a private event plus a public event. In addition to that, we have a new hotel who's asked for both on and off-site consumption at 1409 Conference Center Boulevard. That particular application has not quite finished their building codes inspections, and we would like to issue it once they are, have made those successful completions. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions? All right, do we have a motion?
So move.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Second.
Mr. Washington, Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Do you have a list of the statements to be paid?
Move for pay the bills.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, Ms. Gels Harris, Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
I have one board and commission appointment that you, that you've already taken a look at, but it's recommend reappointments for the Water and Sewer Board, for Alphonse Carter Jr. and Kathy Nobles, and also for John R. Santamore for reappointments to the Water and Sewer Board.
Move we accept the recommendation of the mayor.
A second.
All right, Vice Mayor Young, Ms. Gels Harris. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Have Mr. Gerke, I think we have some other business?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland and members of the City Council. Tonight, I bring to you a grant for $50,000 for the replacement and installation of some fence along the terminal area. We'll be replacing the mature four-foot chain link fence that's in front of the terminal by the ramp, and then also installing some six-foot security fence, kind of building to building to better secure the area. This will be 95% funded through the state and federal government, and the local portion will be coming from the airport fund.
Any questions?
Mr. Gerke, this will be a much more attractive fence than the fence with the terminal.
Absolutely, we'll be using a decorative fence much like you see around some of our parks. There'll be an area that is out of the view of the terminal area that we use for construction entrances and things like that, well, that will be a black vinyl chain link, but again, improving the look and professionalism of the area.
I would move we accept the grant.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Young, Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Crumley, did you want to discuss the comprehensive plan that's coming up?
Perhaps to give you some dates coming up. The kickoff week is August 18th. The first meeting of the task force will be on Tuesday night, August 19th, with the consultants in the evening. On August 20th, at World Outreach Church at 6:30 PM, will be the community kickoff event. All are welcome to attend. There'll be a number of stations set up, allowing for input and discussion about topics as they would come forward from the general public. And then on Thursday night, the 21st, at 5:30, will be a joint city council planning commission meeting, followed by a regular city council meeting that night. At your stations on Tridais, you have some of the materials we'll be using in the community to promote Murfreesboro 2035. We have business cards, we have postcards, we have flyers available for any business or any organization that would like those. We have tabletops for some of the businesses that can use acrylic to put up, so trying to get the word out every way we know how. The planning of our future is probably one of the most important things this council and the people of our city will do for a long time. If the predictions are correct and we again grow by 50% in the next 20 years, there's a lot of things that have to happen.
As far as the list, we have our task force list, I know that we have circulated, and that's from recommendations of council members, recommendations of staff. If there's anyone that we've missed or that has been missed, please send that to Mr. Lyons or Mr. Crumley as quickly as possible if you have any recommendations. We want to be as inclusive as we possibly can. The council representatives or the two council members that showed, responded, they wanted to take, take part in that, Councilman Washington, Councilman LaLance will be serving on the task force. That does not mean as a council member, you are not welcome to come to all those meetings, so there's no votes or anything that are going to be taking place there, so please, they're advertised meetings, so come to every one that you can. I'm going to try to be at every, every meeting that we have. We're also putting together different organizational groups for listening sessions, so anyone who is listening to the council tonight, if you'd like to help take part in that, please let us know. Also, council members, if there's any other individuals that you, you have that you want to see on listening groups, please, please send that in. So want to make sure and keep this as a, as a community event and as inclusive as we can. Mr. Crumley, did I miss anything?
Not a thing, Mayor.
Yes, and the website on the back, we've got, it's www.murfreesboro2035.com, and we've been working on, Ms. Logan's been working really hard on this, but Facebook, Twitter, carrier pigeons, whatever we can to make sure that we get the word out, and this is going to be a big kickoff, and it's going to be a long process, but a good process, so. Okay, any questions? All right, do we have any other, other business?
Mayor, I would like to ask staff to work on the problem that we heard about the signage, and please expedite this, look at all avenues. We had some discussion earlier, you and I did, about some of the avenues to do this. There's several avenues to approach this, and I would ask you to do this with all great speed and a sense of urgency.
Yes, sir.
Ms. McGinnon, just because I know our, Ms. Jones here, what, what could we feel like is a realistic timeline? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm, and I think most everyone up here, we all work off deadlines, so I think it'd be good to have a timeline that, that we could expect something to come back.
If, it appears to me at this point, it's most probable we will need to come back with an ordinance amendment, and we will strive to have that for the next council meeting if other avenues don't work.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McGinnon. Ms. Jones, that'll at least give you an idea of what, what is happening, and I will say, I think this is a good example, Mr. Smotherman, of how the listening sessions can come up with some good ideas on how we can, can move forward, so. All right, do we have any other business?
Dance lessons begin in 15 minutes. I'll kid aside on that, we, I don't, I know you mentioned it, but I do want to reiterate how wonderful it was with the National Night Out, and I know several of us up here were at the National Night Out, the performance of the, the city police department, the fire and rescue department, and Parks and Recreation, it was extremely well-coordinated. We had a beautiful night. I thank the public for their participation because without them coming out and participating, it would not have been an event. And so it was a great event, it was well-coordinated, and certainly the departments all performed explicitly, and they, they did a fantastic job, and I just, I wanted to reiterate that.
The last couple of things, one, I want to thank each of you, I know several of you have, either you're running in an election tonight, or you've got friends who are running an election tonight, and just so the residents know how dedicated your council members are, they didn't drop a beat and were here tonight, and we have business to do, and I appreciate you all for doing that. And the last thing I want to say is today is my, mine and my wife's 15-year anniversary, and so wanted just to say thank you, Ashley, for 15 years of marital bliss.
Marital bliss.
Stand and jerk.